Good evening. My name is Stacy Goss. I will call to order the June 17, 2025 Hutchinson City Council Meeting. Please call or roll.
Richardson.
Here.
Garza.
Here.
Fass.
Here.
Magers.
Here.
Goss.
Here. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Next item is prayer. We have from Pastor House Shield from Trinity United Methodist Church.
Thank you. I'm going to share a prayer that we used in worship on Sunday. We just started a series on Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood. Is there any better place to learn about community and what it is to live as neighbors? So I'm going to share this prayer. Let's pray. Oh, God, thank you for the gift of community, especially for the gift of this community of Hutchinson, and for the opportunity to connect with our neighbors, guide us in finding practical ways to show compassion and kindness to those around us. May we be a source of support and encouragement, a neighbor who truly cares. Grant us the wisdom to understand the needs of those around us and the courage to offer help when it's needed. Help us to be a beacon of your love and a reflection of your compassion in our neighborhood. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. The first proclamation is for Immigrant Heritage Month. If you are here for that, could you please join me behind the podium? Whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation, and whereas immigrants continue to grow, businesses innovate, strengthen our economy and create jobs in Hutchinson, and whereas immigrants have provided the United States with unique social and cultural influence, enriching the character of our nation, and whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but have also campaigned to create a fair and more just society for all Americans. Now therefore, I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as Immigrant Heritage Month in the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, and I urge all citizens to join in this observation.
So I was debating on which version to give you, the two-pager or the four-pager, but I think if you'll allow me, I'll email you the four-pager and read the two-pager. Thank you so much, Mayor and council members. On behalf of Hutch and Harmony, the Kansas Immigration Coalition, and immigrant families throughout our city, we thank you for issuing this year's Immigrant Heritage Month proclamation. This recognition matters. In a time of fear and misinformation, it is no small thing for a city to affirm its immigrant residents. For many in Hutchinson, safety and belonging have not always been guaranteed, yet they chose to stay, to raise families, to work, to worship, to build, and hope. Hutchinson's connection to the Acheson, Topeka, and Santa Fe Railroad began in 1872. Though early railroad labor came from Anglo-European workers, by the early 1900s, Mexican immigrants were actively recruited to build and maintain the expanding rail lines. These workers, known as "traqueros," fled poverty and the Mexican Revolution and found opportunity in Kansas. By 1910, Hutchinson had over 200 Mexican immigrants, most employed as railroad laborers. Many lived in company housing on the west edge of town, boxcar homes provided by the Santa Fe railway. Others clustered near the Rock Island Railroad Depot on the east side. They performed the backbreaking labor of laying tracks, grading roadbeds, and repairing lines in all conditions. Despite the essential nature of their work, they were often invisible in civic records. Though the work was grueling and seasonal, many of these laborers chose to stay. Over time, they brought their families, integrated into local industries, and opened businesses. By 1920, Hutchinson's Mexican origin population had grown to 362, with many now employed year-round in railroads, salt plants, and the city itself. Facing exclusion, Mexican families began establishing their own institutions. In 1927, they founded Our Lady of Guadalupe Catholic Church, a spiritual and cultural anchor still active today. They just had their Fiesta last week. The church provided a place for worship in Spanish, as well as celebrations, support, and pride in heritage. Community life blossomed, with mutual aid societies, softball teams, and local businesses bringing visibility and unity to Hutchinson's Mexican colonia. By the 1930s, local newspapers began acknowledging their presence and traditions, noting celebrations like Mexican Independence Day. Over time, these immigrant families became part of the city's fabric, attending local schools, serving in the military, and contributing to civic life while preserving their heritage. Though overlooked in railroad history books for decades, Mexican laborers were the backbone of Kansas rail development. By 1910, over 8,000 Mexicans worked in Kansas, the majority on rails. Today, historians and communities alike are recovering and honoring that legacy. This Immigrant Heritage Month, we reflect on the labor, the culture, and resilience that these families brought to Hutchinson. From the steel rails of the Santa Fe line to the pews of Our Lady of Guadalupe, their story lives on in our city's identity and values. We thank you for this public recognition and invite our neighbors to go further. On Wednesday, June 26, please join communities across Kansas for a unity vigil in Wichita. It will be an interfaith, intergenerational gathering, calling for dignity, justice, and peace for immigrants. For immigrants are more than our labor. We bring culture, heritage, and traditions that enrich us all. Let us continue building a city that not only honors immigrants, but protects them. Thank you.
The second proclamation is for Juneteenth. If you, if anybody is here for that, if you'd They're being shy. Whereas Juneteenth is a celebration that commemorates the official ending of slavery in Confederate states, and whereas President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation was issued January 1, 1863, but news of the end of slavery did not reach the frontier areas of the United States, particularly the southwestern states, until June 19, 1865, when Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, with news that the Civil War had ended and that the enslaved were free. God, she got me choked up.
Whereas African-Americans who have been slaves in the southwest celebrated June 19, commonly known as Juneteenth Independence Day, as inspiration and encouragement for future generations, and whereas we acknowledge the historical significance of Juneteenth Independence Day to the United States, and join the continued nationwide celebration of Juneteenth Independence Day to provide an opportunity for the people of the United States to learn more about the past and to better understand the experiences that have shaped the United States, and whereas Juneteenth is a day to remember the moral strain and terrible toll of slavery on our country, but is also a day that reminds us of our capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from those dark moments with purpose and resolve, and whereas while we have come a long way in our efforts to promote equity and justice, there is still work left to do. Now therefore...
I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2025 as Juneteenth Independence Day, and encourage all residents to, to join in celebration and solidarity, and further urge all residents to actively raise their own awareness of the significance of this celebration of African-American history in the city of Hutchinson.
Just to give a quick shout-out to any ACPU that are the driving force behind the Juneteenth celebration here in Hutchinson, I want to commemorate and celebrate you all for five years, excuse me, six years, six years of successful programming, and we are excited about the future. We're excited about what you have accomplished thus far, but we've got more work to do, so let's do it.
Absolutely. Thank you, JK. I would just like to say, Council, Mayor Goss, thank you guys very much for the recognition. We really appreciate not just the fact that you guys take the time to do a proclamation, but the partnership that the city has with the groups here in town that, that put together our Juneteenth events, and that you guys are always willing to step up and, you know, kind of participate and do whatever you can to make it a successful event. So I appreciate that. JK, thank you for, for always being a willing participant. And especially, I would like for everybody to give recognition to the kids. These kids back here are the ones that put together the event that you guys are going to see Thursday and Friday, and they've been doing it for, like JK mentioned, six years now. So kudos to these kids, because it's not easy, as most of you know, to pull off a community event, but to be a youth and to do so is very, it's commendable. So that's all.
Tell them where to go.
Yes, where to go. So, Juneteenth will be this Thursday and Friday at Chesterey Lewis Plaza. Thursday starts at 6:00 PM with a talent show, and we also will have vendors on-site. Hutch Hospital will be there for a health fair. They bring out all sorts of different labs, they do the carotid testing. We've had a lot of health concerns caught the past couple of years since we've had that partnership. So be sure to come out, take advantage of that. Dolly Parton Library will be there. And then we'll be back Friday, same place, Chesterey Lewis Plaza, at 7:00 for just a community barbecue and just a good time. So we'd love to see all of you guys there. And Mayor Goss will be kicking us off Thursday, Thursday's event. So we thank her for that as well.
All right.
This is the Pride proclamation. If you are here for this, please feel free to join The city of Hutchinson stands, or I'm sorry, whereas the city of Hutchinson stands as a community that values the civil rights, freedoms, and liberties of all residents, and strives to foster a community where everyone belongs and thrives. And whereas June 28, 2025 marks the 55th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, a pivotal movement in the LGBTQ+ rights movement, and whereas it is essential to foster a sense of solidarity where inequality is valued and all individuals can live authentically without fear of discrimination and prejudice. And whereas the city of Hutchinson is a diverse community of various backgrounds, identities, and talents, and must work together towards peace and understanding. Whereas the city of Hutchinson affirms its dedication to upholding the principles of inclusion in all aspects of community life, and affirms its commitment to building an inclusive and welcoming environment for all residents, now therefore I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as Pride Month in the city of Hutchinson, and recognize the innate humane val, human value and contributions of the LGBTQ+ community that enhance our city.
Okay, so, one of the things that is unique about this year's Pride celebration is that there's a partnership between Salt City Pride and Comic-Con, which is going to bring in arguably about 3,000 to 4,000 people this weekend, or more, stand corrected on that. But what I love is that there is such a sense of dedication to make sure that there's a sustainable contribution that's given to this community. And I'm not just talking about numbers, I'm talking about money. They have developed programming to make sure that young people, minorities specifically, are able to pursue a college education without questioning whether or not they're able to pay for that education. And I think that that is commendable and honorable. So I want to appreciate you for the work that you're doing, and for the contributions that your organization is making to this city and to humanity at large.
Thank you. I didn't know we had to speak, and I should have known that she wasn't going to. So I will just keep it very quick and very small. I want to applaud Hutchinson for choosing to see commonality over our differences, and I want to applaud you for doing this. This is history in the making. I'm very humbled by it, we all are. It takes a lot to make a statement like this, and I know there's always pushback, but I can assure you that finding what's alike rather than what's different is building bridges in this city. It allows families like mine who have children like yours that are veterans, and military, and homeowners, and business owners. It lets them know that they're welcome here. It helps us build our businesses, and it makes us want to put more into this community. What's even better about it is it makes more people want to come to Hutchinson. It makes them want to invest in this community, and that is really all we want to do here. I hope that you will come out and see the event for yourself and see that it is exactly what we've been saying for years. I hope that you will get to know your neighbors better through this, this event. I hope that you will ask each other who you are, and you will reach out your hand, and, and tell each other to have a good day. That is all we want from this community. We want to give back and send kids back to college. We want to give books to, to needy kids, and we want to acknowledge the nonprofits' works that are going on here. Kansas Pride is not just for the LGBTQ. It is imperative that we make that clear. It is for Hutchinson as a whole. So if you have questions, reach out and ask. We are always here to answer. We thank you again for, for signing this proclamation. It means far more than you know. Have a blessed day.
No costume this year.
I'm saving it.
Good enough. You're incognito. Whereas the fictional character Clark Kent, aka Superman, arrived in Smallville, Kansas, in a spaceship during a meteor shower, and whereas the city of Hutchinson and Smallville share many similarities, and whereas the city of Hutchinson has formally recognized these similarities since June 21, 2013, when Clark Kent/Superman was inducted into the Kansas Hall of Fame. Whereas Hutch Rec, in collaboration with community partners with the Kansas State Fair, Strataca, the Cosmosphere, Hutchinson Zoo, Downtown Hutchinson, and NACCO Comic-Con, announced the 2025 Smallville Festival. Now therefore I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim that June 19 through 21, 2025, the city of Hutchinson shall be known as Smallville, Kansas, the home of Clark Kent.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. First, I just want to thank Hutch Rec, all our partners that have continued to keep this going for, this is our 13th proclamation, which is absolutely insane to me. I just want to thank everyone that's involved. The event this year is bigger than in previous years, thanks to collaboration with many different organizations in town, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to the events of this week. I just want to make two quick points. So, this is our 12th anniversary of the first proclamation, and it was started based on love of a TV show, the longest-running superhero TV show ever, and it lasted 10 years. We've surpassed that with this celebration. And in the time that we've done this celebration, and film, and TV, we've seen eight different versions of Superman, Supergirl, Superboy, and next month, there's a new movie coming out. So, it's always going to be relevant. People are always going to be invested in comic books and superheroes and the fun that comes along with that. So, it, it's kind of crazy to me that we've outlasted the show that started this whole idea, and I look forward to many years to come. And then my second point just kind of wraps up all of these proclamations. When we started this, it was very important to me that this was about community, and everything we've heard today is exactly what that's about. And, and in comics and, and superhero lore, you can find examples of this all over the place. Superman is an immigrant. Wonder Woman's an immigrant. There are graphic novels that celebrate and tell the story of Emancipation Day. There are festivals that draw together artists of color to celebrate their works. There is a, an annual graphic novel that DC puts out every year called DC Pride, celebrating characters in the universe that are part of that group. So I am, I'm overjoyed that we can celebrate with them. I'm definitely looking forward to supporting their events, as I hope that they will come and support ours. Obviously, we are collaborating some this year, and it's just important to me as one of the founders of this whole idea that, that we all work together. Comic books span every aspect of life, including all of the proclamations that we've heard here today. So it's really cool to be a part of something that can be inclusive for all these people. So, thank you again.
Just to follow up on that, on that note, it's hard to speak past the person who helped found the whole idea. I would just like to invite everyone, friends, family. It is a busy weekend for many amazing, great reasons, but we invite you all to partake in the Smallville Festival over the next three days. If you're not sure what that looks like or how you might be able to be involved, you can check it out at Smallville Festival on Instagram and Facebook. You can find a list of all of the events. I wish I could say all of the activities, but there's just so, so much going on. It's all jam-packed. Go to hutchrec.com/ smallvillefestival if you'd like to see a list of the events that you can go to, including all of the great partners that we're working with. And then finally, if you want to engage digitally in any other way, feel free to use the Smallville Festival Hutch, sorry, Smallville Festival Kansas, that is Smallville Festival KS hashtag in your posts. That being all of the sort of jargony stuff, I do also just want to say that, that the spirit of the festival is really Superman and the ideals that he upholds, and like Christopher says, it has everything to do with all of the other proclamations we've made today. There's a quintessential Superman There's a quintessential Superman quote that I'd love to leave you all with, that is probably the one he's most famous for, it's his tagline, and that is "Truth, Justice, and a Better Tomorrow." So I hope you all join us in celebrating that throughout the next three days for the Smallville Festival. Thank you.
Item number five, petitions for monstrances and oral communications from the audience.
This part is for oral communications from the audience. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and to items not on the agenda. Audience members may address items on the agenda when the item is discussed by council.
Good evening, Mayor Goss and Council. I'm Deborah Tufel with the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here during public comment to give thanks to the city and appreciation for being part of a really important Reno County-wide economic development strategic planning process that you all signed on to be a part of over the last few months, and the work is underway. We have our, some of our partners here in town who are facilitating focus groups this week, in fact, those kicked off this morning where we engaged workforce and education partners. We had mayors and county officials from across the county as part of a focus group. We met with the Startup Hutch Board, we met with the Economic Development Advisory Council of Greater Hutch, and then wrapped up this afternoon with the Board of the Hutchinson Community Foundation. We are here tonight and tomorrow through Thursday morning, we'll be doing more focus groups, but in particular, I want to mention that we have a public forum tomorrow night at Memorial Hall from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. It's open to any and all to come out and share ideas around economic development of our community. The themes that have emerged so far are the things that you're investing in, like housing, childcare, what we're doing to support entrepreneurs and new startup businesses, diversity in the community, and, and other types of economic development, which includes infrastructure and, and those types of incentives that spark development. But with me tonight, I want to introduce the partners that are helping us with this work. First, we have a group from Opportunity Funding that's walking this path with Greater Hutch. They've worked with us over the last 10 years on some capital campaigns, so they're here observing the process and soaking up all the data because they'll be working with us later this fall. But leading the facilitation is Amy Holloway with AHA, Amy Holloway Advisor, and so I'd like to introduce Amy. She has just a few slides, and we'll try to keep it under five minutes. Amy?
Yeah, thank you.
Amy, and before you begin, I just want to tell you guys out there, we do have seating that is freed up in here if you wanted to join us, or you can stay out there, totally fine.
Well, thank you and good evening, Mayor Goss and members of the council. It's really good to be here in person. As Deborah said, we're just starting the strategic planning process, and the purpose of my work is to develop a countywide strategic plan focused on what steps we need to take over the next five years to grow our economy and make this a better place for everyone. So, again, very excited to kick this off. We are, again, focused on a countywide strategy, and the topics we're going to be covering range from, you know, traditional economic development, business attraction, local business expansion, entrepreneurship, but I expect that we'll also get into topics related to housing, childcare, kind of quality of place topics that directly relate to our ability to grow our economy. So we're just scratching the surface right now in our five-month-long process, but I'm already starting to see those themes come up. And what you're seeing here on the screen in front of you are just some of the milestones we have in the project, so this first trip today through Thursday, and then we'll be back on the ground in August to conduct a workshop and just start to develop the framework for the strategy. We, we have a, an advisory group that we're meeting with every other Friday through October, who's going to serve as a sounding board for this project. And again, this is about a five-month project. I expect that will be done around mid-October when we'll have a nice public unveiling of the strategy. Hearing from the community is a really big part of any of these strategic planning processes. Yes, we're going to be looking at data and doing some benchmark analysis, but it's really about what people in the community want to see in their economy going forward. So we've got a variety of ways that we're engaging people from that advisory committee that I, I mentioned to the public survey. We've got a flyer out there with a link to the public survey for anyone who wants to participate. Everyone is welcome to do that. We're leading focus groups and interviews. You can see that today, this is my first day on the ground here, we already have 175 survey responses. I expect this week to hear from over 100 people in terms of focus groups, and then that open house tomorrow night. So, trying to engage as many people as possible because that local perspective is what this is all about, and the way that we make this strategy is tailored as it can be for you all. So again, here's a link to the survey. You can either click on the QR code or the link here that'll be on the flyer outside. We launched it on June 2nd, we're going to be closing the survey on July 1st. There should be plenty of time for people to participate. We ask for anyone in the room, I mean, this is again, open to the entire public, so if you want to share it with your networks, your family members, your schools, your employers, I mean, please spread the word. This is the way that we hear from the broadest diversity of people in the community as possible. And that's it. This is just a picture of, of some of the things that we're doing this week. You can see we've got a packed agenda. I led, I think, five focus groups today, I've got four or five more tomorrow, and then two or three more on Thursday. So again, a good way to engage people. We've got about 10 people showing up at each focus group. And as Deborah said, that public session at 5:00 tomorrow night, everyone's welcome to come, and you can meet me and the rest of the team and share your ideas with us there. That's what I've got. I can't see the time there, but I have a feeling that I'm out of time. Yeah.
Can you tell us the structure of the meeting tomorrow? Is it a come-and-go event? Is it a open-mic night? What, what should people expect if they attend?
Yeah, it's come-and-go, so from 5:00 to 7:00. So, we'll have five or six questions for anyone who comes in to help us answer, and then we'll be able to talk with people one-to-one. So if you want to meet me or the rest of the team, you know, you'll have a chance to have a conversation with us. But we are going to be asking you, again, five or six questions about the current state of the economy and the future of the economy, and you'll have a chance to write those answers down, and we'll take all those answers back and process. Is that helpful?
Yeah, and the information that you gather, if a person completes the survey and attends the event, that that's acceptable, they, they can and should do both.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, different questions.
Awesome, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Can you go back to the website, I think it was the last slide, so we can have that up?
Absolutely. If you have your cameras, you can take a shot of that QR code.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions or remarks from council? We don't usually do that for public comment, but this is a little bit different, being as we've brought her and these organizations into the community, so I want to make sure that we have any questions answered, if we have any. Or we'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll see you tomorrow.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item.
Item number six, consent agenda.
Any questions or remarks from council on the consent agenda?
The, the entertainment district's the same size as it was last year?
Yes.
Okay. Then no. I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Item number seven, ordinances and resolutions. A, consider an ordinance authorizing issuance of GO bonds to pay for traffic signals and road maintenance.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. We have two projects we are about ready to start that we intend to bond. To conform with IRS regulations, we need to approve an ordinance that allows us and authorizes us to bond the projects. The two projects are for traffic signal improvements, which was in the 2025 budget. The projects, or the intersections that they are doing for traffic signals are listed in the ordinance itself. And then also street improvements. These are the arterial street improvements that you approved last council meeting. And also, I want to note that that included the airport parking lot. To remove any question about whether the airport parking lot bond should be taxable or not, we did a little swapping, we're going to pay cash for the airport parking lot and bond more for the arterial streets, just so that's clear, because that amount is higher than what we anticipated in the 25 budget. So the total of those projects plus anticipated bonding costs is $915,000. The legal council has reviewed the ordinance and prepared it, and city staff recommends approving the ordinance as provided. Are there any questions?
These projects on page 60, when, when do they kickoff? This year or next?
This year. So the arterial will be in line with what you approved last council meeting, so I believe it should start soon. And then the traffic signals, they are ready to start as soon as we approve this ordinance.
Questions, since I was a traffic signal technician years and years ago, the improvements are to update the traffic signals, am I right? That's what we're doing, correct?
Correct.
Since we are taking traffic lights out, this is not putting any more in, this is to update the controllers that we have, correct?
Correct, it's updating existing, it's not any additional.
Is this doing the, the fire engines? This don't have the power engines in it, does it, Chief? That's all questions I have.
Is there anybody here to speak on this item from the public? Any additional remarks or comments from council? Looking for a motion to approve?
I would move to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of GO bonds to pay for traffic signals and road maintenance, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Item number 7B, consider a resolution fixing a hearing date and time for unsafe structures and authorize the mayor to sign.
Good evening, council. Jason Lady Building Official, tonight I bring you a resolution fixing a hearing date and time for unsafe structures. This is the same resolution that I brought back to you on May 6th, has the same 10 properties on it. Due to a, tech, some technicalities, we needed to reschedule this for the 5th of August. So I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
Everything else remains the same, just moving the date of hearings?
Yes, everything else remains the same, the addresses remain the same, same buildings. So, we're just moving the hearing date to the 5th of August.
Does this possibly give staff time to work with the owners to go ahead and abate the issues in advance and possibly remove them from the list?
Yes, it will, and we're working through some of those currently.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Any remarks or questions from council?
No.
No.
Is there anybody here in the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, looking for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve a resolution fixing a hearing date and time for unsafe structures and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Number eight, new business, there is none. Number nine, report to city officials, council.
So, there is a difference between the agenda that was posted on the website and the agenda that was handed out to council. So the new business, there should be a new business item, 8A, which is consider approval of a marketing investment in the amount of $4,500 to the Monarchs baseball team and authorize the mayor to sign.
And I believe we have a presentation?
Jessica, can you get 19 to pull it up?
Am I giving the presentation? You just made the slide, right? Okay. Okay, thank you. So I, after our conversation two weeks ago, Mr. Fast helped put this together. So this shows you the support that is given by different municipalities, also what their field rental is, who has the concessions. So, I believe all of these teams play in the same league, and so it's one of those things that, again, just, I want to reiterate that the Monarchs aren't threatening to go anywhere or anything like that, this is simply us, kind of a, a good faith gesture to them. But these are all communities that could potentially in the future look to expand and take our team, or other communities could also do the same thing. So, kind of stealing some support for the Monarchs, not only do we keep them in town, but also looking at the statistics that they posted, I believe it was after last Saturday's or last Friday's game. They've had over 80,000 visitors just in a couple of years' time. So they, they're obviously doing the work to bring people into the community. Then there's ticket sales, merch, alcohol, concessions, food and bev. So, they do currently pay a $1,900 field rental. Is that this year's rate, or is that last year's rate?
I believe that's this year's rate.
Is that the full price rate, or is that the discounted rate?
Justin, are you around?
I would have to double-check on that one.
Okay.
I think it's 19 games at 100 bucks a game.
But is that the, is that the full amount for this year, or is that last year's rate?
It, it was 100 dollars a game last year.
Okay.
And I think that is correct.
Okay.
I'm not positive, but...
Okay. So, the $4,500 would go to support them, essentially it would be no different than a sponsorship that we have with NJCAA, or any other group or organization that comes into town. So, any questions from council, or remarks from council about this item?
What do they mean by who has the concessions? What's, talk to me about?
So that's who takes the profit from the concession sales. It's likely who also staffs it, purchases the items, stocks it, all of that.
So is that different teams in the community, or what?
So the way it's currently set up is all concessions at Hobart Deter. Hutch wreck has the concessions for any game that's played there, if it has concessions. I don't know if every game has concessions, though. And that's not something that the Monarchs is, Monarchs are looking to change at this time. Hutch wreck will continue to have the concessions operating and profit. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this item?
My name is Darren Tru, and I live at 1801 East Avenue G. And I guess my concern about this is I have no problem supporting the Monarchs, but two weeks ago, I was here at the council meeting, I sat through the budget meeting, and we were talking about cutting money for streets and other services. We talked, they talked about all the money we need to spend on the... We talked, they talked about, uh, all the money we need to spend on the sewer treatment plant, the water treatment plant. We don't have enough money. And now, we're just gonna give forty-five hundred dollars to a baseball team that didn't even ask for it. I just think, uh, you know, with property tax and that's all I hear everybody talking about, with just so much taxes. I know you guys are trying to keep it, you know, not raising taxes. And I just think we need to quit. We need to concentrate on the primary streets, public safety, and our water sewer system. And if we have anything else, then maybe give it away. But, right now, after hearing the budget last week, I don't think we got any left. You know? I mean, where's this forty-five hundred dollars coming from? So, that, that's my concern. I just, I think we need to take care of our primary stuff first, and I don't think we're gonna have a whole lot of money left after that. So, thank you.
Any additional remarks or questions from council?
You know, um, yeah, he's got a point, but also points, we have to take care of our people that are here, especially as far as I'm concerned, the Monarchs are business. And we have to take care of the business people, too. Yeah, we're tied on the budget, and there's a lot of reasons why we're tied on the budget. One of the particular reasons why we're tied on the budget is because we're fully staffed. All our, our departments got all the staff. We haven't been staffed like this in a long time. And all the extra money came from the positions that were open. I know, 'cause I used to work here. And all the positions that we had, we had money left over because we had positions that are open. Now, we're fully staffed. Almost every department is probably seventy to eighty percent staffed. Now, all the money goes back and hiring people that run this city. So, as far as I'm concerned, this, the Monarchs are business. And they bring people in by selling, um, uh, they bring the baseball game, people come here and watch the Monarchs, um, probably go to hotels, probably do stuff like that. And I don't know if you know, but we're a business, it, we're a sports town. And Monarchs is a big sports part of our city. So, as far, as far as I'm concerned, the Monarchs is a business, and we have to support our business. And that's why, in my opinion, why we're so tight on our budget. And for us to be almost eighty-five to ninety, eighty-five to ninety percent staffed, to take police, fire, and all that, that's a great thing. And we're gonna have to find the money. We will find the money. The city has to keep going. So, with that being said, I mean, that's all I gotta say, so...
And thank you for your remarks. Um, and I do wanna point out, in a memo that I had sent to Mr. Viegas, was, um, you know, if, if every fan spends twenty dollars, which is the midpoint of, um, what, uh, like sales are, um, in other communities of this size, we recoup that money and then some, um, just on, um, the food and bev taxes. Um, so, on top of that, we have traveling teams that are coming in beforehand. Um, some of them stay the night, some of them don't. Fans who stay the night and some of them don't. Um, but they eat food here, they get gas, they maybe do some shopping here. Um, so, I'm confident that this four thousand five hundred dollars is not a gift to an organization, but an investment and, um, an investment in the, the business that they're bringing to Hutchinson.
I'd push back just a little bit on this, just because we made a huge investment in the ball field out there to allow more games in inclement weather. And, and I would say that's, we, that's also a big investment we've made into being able to have ball games out there, and I think that should be something we should take into consideration.
Uh, we also raised their rent by double. The ball game or the, uh, field rent doubled, which...
It was an expensive field upgrade.
For, it was, but we're not, we didn't do it to make money. Uh, we did it as a service to the community. Uh, we also split the cost with, uh, Hutch Juco and, um, Hutch Public Schools. Um, so, it wasn't, we didn't spend all of the money on our, uh, out of our own budget. Uh, we split the cost.
We did keep the cost level for the Monarchs. We didn't raise...
For this year? Well, we did after I insisted that we did, yes. Because the contract that was due, um, to them, that would demonstrate, uh, their field rental for this year was only provided a couple of weeks in advance of the start of their season. Which took the rate from fifty to a hundred dollars, um, I believe. Again, I, Justin's not here, so I can't ask those or confirm those rates, but...
I, I'm not ready to make a decision on this personally. I'd like to think about this a little bit more and look at those other fields that, the, the matrix in regards to, uh, who's getting concessions, how much the field rent is, and how much the city don't, or, or supports, but also other aspects involved. I'd like to do a little bit more research on that.
Yeah, I agree. I, I do, I think the Monarchs bring a great, uh, great thing at Hutchinson. But, again, it's a great point about the budget, but then Steve, I look back to, we're investing into business, bringing people in. But, I would also like to take just a minute, um, to, to make sure that's the right decision. Um, 'cause there's, I mean, with budget stuff going on, it's, it's a thing we really need to make sure we make the right choice.
Well, I got, I got no problem. I think that's a smart thing. But, on, again, on that, on, on, on that, it's part of being a, having a business. We gotta have good fields in order to bring the field, bring the, the teams here. So, as far as the construction of the fields and us making them new grass and everything, that's part of business. That's part of business.
We were planning to do that, whether the Monarchs were here or not.
Right.
Um, that was something that, um, was talked about with Fun Valley and with Hobart Deter. Um, and that's why it was split between Hutch Juco and, um, USD three oh eight. Even though we talked about the Monarchs, uh, Monarchs a lot during that, um, conversation during consideration of those budget items, um, we didn't do it solely for them.
Can, can we keep this in the back of our mind as we're going through budgets and see where this may fit with all our other items that we have to think about on budget season?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not against it at all. I just wanna see where it fits.
Yeah. I might, I might add also that with the installation of the new turfs, that business of the Monarchs should make more money because they're not gonna have all the rainout games. I mean, they wouldn't be able to play for days after the last week of rains. Um, you know?
Well, I don't have a problem to, to table it. If you, if you're not comfortable, you should say, "I don't want, I'm not ready for it." So, I don't have a problem tableing it.
Well, and, and there's also, sometimes we budget for things that we think is a good investment for a, a return, but also, we, we budget things that we think are a benefit to the overall, uh, community.
Correct.
For enjoyment and stuff like that.
I got you.
So, we gotta think about all those things.
I agree. Cut.
So, if, if that's the mind of, um, the others on the council, I would encourage you to, as you're considering this, also consider the twenty thousand dollar annual commitment that we made to, uh, NJCAA, um, in promise of a track and field tournament, because that's a twenty thousand dollar annual, um, four times as much as what this is. Um, and that is a three-day event in the community, whereas this is nineteen games, um, played at Hobart Deter.
That's fair.
So, if the goal is to move into budget talks with a pot of money in mind that we're willing to, um, spend for these types of events or support, because we do support other events, um, during other asks throughout the year, um, you know, we're essentially saying no to the Monarchs because the timing is that it falls during the budget. Now, we're all thinking about budget season, season. In March, we were not thinking about budget season, and y'all very quickly said yes to the NJCAA.
I, I'd push back a little bit on that. It wasn't just for the hope of a track and field event coming for the next five, six years. It was also because of the ESPN connection with the NJCAA basketball tournament. Um, the volleyball tournament, I don't think you can really compare NJCAA with, with, uh, the Monarchs. And that's not a dig at the Monarchs at all. They have a great organization, been doing it for a long time, very supportive of the Monarchs.
I'm not saying no to it. I just like, just a little bit more time on it, that's all. I mean, I think it's a great thing that Hutchinson has, but, um, I'd just like a little more time on it, that's all.
Um, I'm looking for a motion to table item.
Before I make that motion, we could keep in mind, uh, at some point, we'll have another city-county meeting. This could be brought up during that time, too, 'cause there's a benefit to the county overall as well for economic development. I would move to table, um, this discussion.
Second?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Report of city officials. Mr. Garza, you are first, as always.
Okay. Um, oh, yes, I'd like the, uh, the immigrant, June seventeenth, June nineteenth, and the Pride Month. I thought that was all good, good comments for that. Um, our city's going a long ways. We have a lot of things going on, as you can tell, and, uh, I think it was, uh, uh, they're right, our budget's tight. So, we gotta work with that and we'll see what we come out with. So, and the last I'd like to say is that, um, I'm an immigrant. My pa, no, I'm not personally immigrant. I'm, I'm a, I'm a immigrant family. My parent, grandparents came from Mexico, so I'm proud to be from immigrants. So, I think that was great what, what they said today. So, uh, and, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you. Ain't that right? I haven't got no more to say.
Mr. Richardson?
Uh, I would say, I would encourage people to become familiar with our fireworks ordinance. I know there's been a lot of information online. There will be a lot more information online in regards to, uh, what the city's ordinances are, what the, what, which should match the county, if I believe. I'm sure we'll have more information on that. But, I know there's been changes at the state level, and so, that's raised a lot of people talking about what the rules are. I wanna make sure you're familiar with our local city ordinances. Um, are you, are we gonna have, I asked this, and I can't remember what the answer was, we're gonna have a brush cleanup?
Yes.
Okay. And that will be announced soon?
Yeah, I was gonna have Cecil come up.
Thank you. Sorry. I will, I will abstain from that one right now. Um, I would really like to have a presentation at the next meeting, uh, in regard to, um, responsibilities and why we have some of the ordinances we have in card, in regards to grass height, just the reasoning behind it, why? Because that, that's a conversation I have with a lot of people, grass height. Um, why do city ditches get mowed every so often, but city, but people have to mow their yards at twelve inches or higher? How does that compare to other communities? I know a lot of them are at twelve or eight inches. Um, we have to balance out our budget and workflow. A lot of our areas are low-lying and sit in water for ditches, so it takes a while to be able to mow it. But, some of that, and then also, um, obviously with stormwater, curb cleanup, what we do, what's technically the responsibility of homeowner, why we split those responsibilities with our citizens to help, uh, keep things clean and keep tax dollars down on what it takes to get this stuff taken care of. Um, just a little primer on why we have these rules, rather than just having the rules and people wondering why we have these rules. Um, and that's all I have for right now.
Thank you. Mr. Fast?
Um, big thanks to Cecil and the crew for keeping the branches off the streets and the drains cleaned. Uh, it's quite clear, um, if you were up very early this morning, that there were a lot of, a lot of issues, and it's gotten cleaned up. And I, it's probably not just Cecil, it's probably Parks Department, it's probably everybody. So, thank you for that. Thank you for the Parks Department for putting up the American flags on Main Street for a month here. Um, I think that, uh, if South Hutch can do it, we certainly can do it. Um, so, um, the Woody Seat, uh, was progressing really well. I don't know how far this will set it back, but, but if you haven't looked at the Woody Seat, i- if you can go, go to the Jump Start or somewhere down on West Avenue A, um, it, it looks very different and it's starting to, you, you'll be able to start to visualize what that, what that's gonna look like. So, if you have a minute, take a look. This week is Third Thursday, and as we heard earlier, um, Stacy will be kicking off the Juneteenth celebration with a song or two, um, or maybe a speech. Did I get it wrong?
Oh, I'll sing.
Or do we want you to sing?
I'll sing. A little Dolly Parton.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Magers?
Um, so, I just wanted to, um, I actually drove through the, uh, one of the, oh my gosh, streetlights that was removed have been covered up, and I, uh, actually thought that was really good.
Who's that?
I did. I didn't, I didn't die going through it. So, it's a, it's a good addition. Um, I travel that a lot, uh, on Fourth Street, so I thought that was a great addition. Cecil, I have to commend you on great, um, interview today on the news, um, explaining why and everything. I thought that was really good for people to know that. Um, and then also, we had a community meeting, um, last week. Mr. Garza, thanks for, thanks for attending. Um, I wanted to thank Jess, Jessica, I know she worked her tail off to put that together, as well as Aaron Cecil. And then I also wanna thank Chief for driving up across town when community members had some questions that he came up to answer. So, I think that went really well, it was pretty well attended. Um, so, I just wanna thank everyone who's involved for that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, guys. Um, Justin, is Orchard Park reopened?
It is. We opened it on Monday in the morning.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you. So, Orchard Park, um, there was a hole in the, um, surfacing by the merry-go-round, merry-go-round, I guess is what it is. Um, and so, that was replaced, that was covered by warranty, um, uh, from the manufacturer installer, um, and it is now, uh, back open. Um, the Woody Seat progress, the video is still on the website, um, under the engineering department, so you can, um, kinda watch that time lapse showing, um, everything they've done, and, uh, it's, it's really interesting to watch. Third Thursday, the website that was referenced earlier is hutchrick.com/smallvillefestival, and that shows you, um, the full list of events for, um, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Um, so, there is plenty to do. Um, a lot of it is, uh, free, um, family-friendly, or, um, at very little cost. Um, so, lots, lots of activities to pick from. Um, I think that covers it for me. John, we'll get your, um, your request for presentation from staff. Um, I think that's a lot of good information that...
If, if time allows.
Yeah.
For the next meeting.
Would be helpful to share, and, um, I think I asked for kind of a public, um, camp, public information campaign at the, um, beginning. I think there's a lot of, not only like, what is the information, but where do you find the information on the website, too? Um, so that when people do have questions and they can, um, know where to look, um, regarding camper storage and boat storage and, um, what you can park where and all of those things that people, um, wonder and really the complaints tick up in the summertime. Um, any remarks from Mr. Viegas?
I was just gonna have Cecil come up.
Just wanted to touch base real quick. Recent storms, um, we're evaluating how much wind damage was done last night and potentially tonight, and kinda drive the city. We've had crews out all day today, um, picking up, cleaning up where we can, barricading off the ones we can't move. So, um, we're gonna be evaluating that overnight with what storms happened tonight, and then watching to see if, if it meets that criteria that we need to have a brush site opened up, we will. Um, but we don't have an answer on that yet. We wanna see what tonight's storms do. Um, we're also, just to give you guys a heads up, we're also watching, 'cause, um, the rain amounts, uh, north of town, um, especially the Cow Creek, Lyons is potentially, I think, Jeff, if we hit three inches?
Yeah.
In Lyons, that could potentially put us in flood stage here. Nothing to panic about. It just means there's gonna be water on the levees. So, uh, something for us to keep an eye on. So, that's another factor that might go into that decision is, if we go into that stage, we're gonna have crews working around the clock, watching the levees for a couple of days. So, uh, but we'll make an announcement if there is a need for having the dump sites open, and if we do that, we'll see when we can get those open and what locations.
I have a, maybe a stupid question about the dump. Um, I don't think I've been there in a long time. Uh, is the... Is the entrance that residents use the same entrance that, like, our trucks would use?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, everything at the landfill has to be scaled in, so everybody enters the same way.
Same scale, okay. So would it be possible, even if we don't, if we made the call early based on just the fact that, you know, everything's kind of waterlogged at the dump, and then we held the brush for a couple of days or a week to kind of let everything dry out, would that be an option? Because I know there are people who are already concerned, number one, the brush, but number two, getting to the dump and it's waterlogged, and they don't want to get stuck or that sort of thing.
Yeah, so I mean, if we decide to open a brush site in town, that would be on, you know, on the city. We wouldn't necessarily have to be hauling that brush to the landfill right away. We can sit on it for a while. Typically, the places we've done this in the past has been behind the Ball Diamonds in Cary Park, or potentially up at the Sports Arena. We want to double check with the school and the Sports Arena, make sure there's something going on before we dedicate that site. A site we've used in the past has also been out by Rice Park. But we want to make sure, anytime we do those kind of places, it tends to put a lot of wear and tear on the, the parking lots that we use. So it's just one of those things we want to maintain where we're going to do it. Is there actually need, was there enough of the city that had damages that warrants having that time to put those into place? But yeah, if we do decide to do that, it's not like we would have to haul it right away. And then people can make arrangements with the county as well, because the county runs the dump site, so the actual landfill.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, mayor and council. Evan Patterson, city engineer. I apologize, I'm cheating a bit because I'm using Enrico's time because I missed it earlier. But I thought in light of the earlier discussion, it might make sense to make people aware that the last couple of the Monarchs games this season are coming up. They have a game scheduled tonight. I don't think it's going to happen.
It's canceled.
But then they have one on tomorrow at 7:00 PM down at Hobart Dutter, and then the last one's Monday down at Hobart Dutter as well at 7:00 PM. So my kids are loaded up on KUP this week, so they're not going to make it, but we're going to try to get them down on Monday for some local baseball. That's it.
Thank you. I'm sure you have plenty to say in the next part.
Yeah, I got to save my energy for that.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number 10, future agenda items, union contract amendments and Pepsi contract.
Do you have a definitive time of when those will come? Those have been on the future agenda items list for quite a while now.
I can speak to the Pepsi contract. We're waiting on their council to review the contract. It's been reviewed and approved by all the other parties, but we're waiting for Pepsi to respond.
Okay. And what month do we anticipate having the union contracts?
We recently started with SEIU. All the other ones we've knocked out. So once we have SEIU completed, then we'll be done.
And we're doing two or three this year?
So they're staggered, so we recently did, we knocked out all of the other union negotiations, and so I think SEIU is last, so...
Thank you. Next item is adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss? Yes.